He's a lot number. Do you want everybody to put their names up in the chat? Do you need that?
No. I'm not allowed people to speak.
Our microphone says that it is five o'clock, so we will call the January 11th meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission to order. Please call the roll.
Knight. Martin.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Before we get started, I was going to say, kind of on last minute notice, we decided because of the spikes that were occurring in the coronavirus outbreak in early January, we decided that we would meet this way. It's not ideal, but safety is preferable to expedience. Hopefully, we can get back on track again in February, but we shall see. You have all received a copy of the minutes of the December 14th meeting. And do you have any corrections or adjustments to make?
No.
Motion.
Air motion.
So.
Yes, sir.
Second.
That candy.
Martin and Bruno as the first and second.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and then Danny just joined in, so I will count him as attendance also. I don't know if they like.
Welcome aboard again, Danny. Okay. Are there any adjustments to be made to the agenda? Not hearing any. We'll have the agenda. It is being set. First item of business.
Election of Chairman.
Floor is open for nominations.
There you go.
I've got.
Or any other nominations? Okay, we have a nomination and a second. Call the roll.
Okay, I did the first or second. I've got the nomination. Who was the first and second?
Lucian was first. Blake was second.
I was second. That's fine.
Okay. Knight. Danny, you'll need to unmute your, hit the little microphone button. Should be red with a little strike through.
You're still muted.
Am I now?
Nope, you're good now. Okay.
What am I voting on?
For Rob to be the chairman.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Martin. Blake.
Are you gonna vote?
Yes. I think the internet messed up in my house.
Middleton.
Upstain.
Okay, and Gillum. Oh, Bruno, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Hi.
Good grief. Okay.
Hey, we'll get rolling eventually, and thank you, gentlemen. I hope to live up to your confidence.
Okay, election of vice chairman.
Who's vice chairman? Who's vice chairman?
Raise your hand if you want to be heard, okay, so we can not override each other. Steve Bruno.
Nominate Blake Martin.
Yeah.
Danny?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second for Blake.
Okay, Knight.
Yes.
Martin.
Upstain.
Middleton.
Yes.
Bruno.
Yes.
Gillum.
Yes.
Okay, preliminary plat of lots 18 and 19, Hum Road subdivision, Jim Butler surveying agent.
Shelby.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. We'll start in the preliminary plat of lot 18 and 19 for the Hum Road subdivision. Not much to get in on this. Staff recommends the commission table this item until the February meeting. The comments that were provided to the applicant to address never were returned.
Motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion at tables or second.
Mr. Kevin.
Somebody's trying to speak.
Mr. Kevin, this is, this is Jim Bagwell, representing Jim Butler. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Jim.
Yes, those, those comments were emailed back to the planning commission the day, the day I received them.
Mr. Bagwell, those comments that you returned to us didn't address the questions. The DWG file that was sent back to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Those didn't, it still reflected some of the same staff comments.
Well, I addressed every comment on there, and they were either in the notes or written on the survey or on the plat.
Shelby, can you put the, the plat on the screen for us all to look at?
Yes, we'll get that pulled up. Hold on one second. It is actually one. Oh, it's in your email.
It is in my email.
Sniffed it.
Oh, it is in the PowerPoint?
Well, that's the snip. Yeah.
Okay, well, that should hold on.
I had emailed.
If it isn't obvious to the rest of you, it's been a while since we've done this. So bear with us.
Did you find it?
I've got it.
Okay. We're trying to get a bigger version. It's the same snip that was just provided on the PowerPoint slide. The DWG file that was submitted for Hum Road.
Candy.
Can you pull that up in your office?
This is Richard. I have, I have one pulled up here, and I'm reading the comments, and I do see where the fire hydrant distance is addressed. Also see where it says sanitary sewer by North Rock wastewater. There's actually a lift station there at the end of Hum Road, the paved portion of Hum Road. And that lift station is operated by the city of Sherwood. Everything out there would make you believe it should go to North Rock, but it actually pumps back up the hill across Woodruff to hit a part of the Sherwood collection system. I've asked some questions about that, and from what I understand, there is a gravity sewer in there. As far as gravity sewer actually being able to hit that pump station, I don't know about that for sure, but I think it's gonna work. But we can, we can we can sort that one out. So the, the answers to the questions that I had read earlier about the sanitary sewer, we, we got that one. The what nearest fire hydrant, we have that. I know that the placement of the street lighting is something that typically comes from the electrical company, Entergy First Electric, whomever, and we review those and approve them. So that's, that would be covered as well, and I'm I'm gonna have to go back to see the other comments that were made.
The first one, it says amend plat to state zone is R1. It currently says this property is not zoned.
Let me get back to the.
Under general notes.
Number two, it says this property is owned R1. Sherwood land use for this is residential.
Okay, yeah, I'm, 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 I am on an old. I'm an old, I'm on an, an old version of the plat. The one in the packet is not the updated one, so I'm, I'm not looking at the current version of that preliminary plat.
Are you saying you did not get a copy of the updated plat?
I have.
What they're looking at on their screen right now is the DWG file that was submitted to us. Now, whether that be the updated one or not, this is what is claiming to be updated.
Can you share that one for me to see?
Can you not see the screen right now?
I would share.
We can't.
They can or can't? I don't.
Negative. Cannot.
Well, that, that is good to know.
Okay.
All right, you started. Now we're, now we got it. Screen sharing.
Oh, just, yeah.
Everything's popping up. Sorry.
Okay, so what you're looking at was what was submitted, I would assume, for staff review after those comments were made.
Can you hold that? Well, I saw that. I could see it well enough.
I reached submitted on 12/21. A new class is 24 by 36. And my email to Candy.
Okay. Am I allowed to speak?
That's fine, yes. We need clarification on this issue.
I could not open that on my laptop. I forwarded it to Shelby because she has a computer that allows AutoCAD. And this is what came up.
This is what was on there. This is the most recent thing that we've received in reference to Hum Road, lot 18 and 19.
Yeah, and that, this is final plat. Have you got a preliminary plat?
Yes, I did. I did preliminary.
It says to Sherwood Planning preliminary plat.
Well, one in the packet is not current. So if we can find another one, that's one thing. If we can't we'll need to take a look at that.
Would we?
I'm actually, I'm, I'm, I'm not too. I mean, based on this one and based on the comments we've got and, and, and Mr. Bagwell's statement of returning that to us when we find it, I'm not seeing a problem with the preliminary plat. And whatever details that we need to work out, we can have those resolved for the final plat. What the history of this subdivision is basically an exception to every process procedure that we have today. It's been happening, being planted one or two lots at a time. It's not a full subdivision. So each of these lots that are discernible, when you look at like at pages or something like that, you can, you just see a spattering of lots, and each, each of them comes in under its own subdivision name. So these two particular lots, I am familiar with them, and I'm familiar with the drainage, the easements, the sewer, the water, and the electrical, and I'm not opposed to the planning commission going ahead and stepping out to approve this based on what I already know about it and what I've already read on that preliminary plat that's in the packet that is not the updated one. But, but again, as Mr. Bagwell stated, he's, he submitted one, and I'm confident that we can can get a copy that will be complete for the preliminary plat, and any deficiencies then that, that we find, we can certainly have those repaired on the final plat. We wouldn't be able to do the final plat tonight.
I will give you that during the holidays, things tend to fall apart, so there could be a disconnect. But I made a commitment to the mayor several years ago that we were not going to someday, sooner or later, the planning commission was only going to approve plats that were complete and ready to be approved.
Yes.
I will leave it up to the rest of the commission as to whether you want to ask the chairman only to sign it once the chairman can confirm that all of the concerns expressed by staff on the one that we can see are taken care of.
I think that's fair.
Well, we only, we only have an agenda item tonight for a preliminary, but not a final. Right?
Right. All they applied for was a preliminary.
It was just a preliminary plat.
Yeah.
The one shown, what you're showing on the screen now says final on it.
Right. That's what was submitted to us as an update.
Yeah.
So.
So we don't have a preliminary plat to even look at.
Well, the one that's in the packet. Yeah, the one that's in the packet is, is pretty close, but it still lacks those.
And I actually delivered preliminary class, hand delivered preliminary class to Sherwood Planning Commission before the November deadline. So this is not even, this plat was done way before even that. This, this, this was. I brought this out there and asked for approval without going through the planning commission in October.
Right.
I needed to do, do the planning commission. And so I prepared preliminary plat that shows contours and has preliminary plat on it. And this is not, this is not even the flat I brought out there and brought it, and then also had emailed the PDF out there at that time. So this fact, this class, like in October, and I compared the other one in November, so.
I would say at this point, it's up to the commission to decide the next step. I don't.
Commissioners, do you have a preference?
This, in my opinion, this one being a preliminary and the few, few comments that were made are, are not that significant. We're not doing a final tonight. I have no problem with, with approving the preliminary plat this evening, and he can, we can address the final the next one. With the next commission meeting.
Would you concur that that's subject to review, that the chairman confirms that it makes all of the correct question?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the, the comments that are in our packet are addressed to your satisfaction of the chairman and the, and the staff.
And once that comes for us and it's vetted, we can provide a copy to all the commissioners to review. If that's okay.
Is that a motion, Blake?
Yes, sir. Motion. It's kind of long and drawn out.
Is there a second?
Second.
Raise your hand on the second. Okay.
I had Gillum.
It doesn't matter.
I know. It's hard to tell over this. Okay.
Now on, when you make an emotion and second, raise your hand on that so that we can get the record straight, okay?
Well, we can't see everybody on our end because we're screen sharing. So somebody will have to say it out loud if that's okay. Knight?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Okay, replat of lot 5RR Sherwood Commercial Park Holloway Engineering Agent.
So this is a replat into lot 5RR Sherwood Commercial Park. It's a replat of lot 5R to the final plat of lot 5RR. Staff submitted the comments to the applicant, which they have addressed, so staff supports the commission to approve this item.
Only thing I saw was that in the signature block it was signed, it needs to be signed by chairman or vice chairman.
We can definitely take note of that.
Where, where is this piece of property?
It's the corner of Land Trip and Hunter's Co. It's an interstate battery. It's the preexisting business right there with the hash lines on your screen.
Okay.
And they're wanting to absorb the lot north of it. And plant it into one piece.
Are there any other questions or concerns about the plat other than the signature block? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve is Blake.
Second, Steve.
That was perfect. Thank you. Knight?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Middleton?
Hi.
Bruno?
Hi.
Gillum?
Yes.
Okay, site plan of the Woodlands Pro Group agents, and this is a public hearing.
Hey, let me provide a little background on this before we get started. In reviewing this and in reviewing the plan unit development provision of the zoning code, it became obvious that the first step in a, this is requires a long form development plan because it includes properties that are going to be sold off individually. And the requirements under that section of the plan unit development code requires that the, the plat, the preliminary plat be approved first. That doesn't require a public hearing. Secondly, I mean, that needs to be taken care of separately. So secondly, there's no public hearing required on a planned unit development or on the development plan. But in the interest of being totally transparent and letting everybody know what's going on, we could continue to hold a public hearing. But it's not required, and it is not a site plan. It's a development plan, and the development plan can only be approved after the preliminary plat has been approved, and that can be approved by the, it's an enforcement officer or city engineer unless the city engineer wishes the planning commission to approve it in his stead. So what we're going to do tonight, the first thing we're gonna do is take up the issue of the preliminary plat and whether the preliminary plat meets the requirements of the land development and subdivision regulations. And Shelby, if you and or Richard can address that, please.
I'm gonna turn those questions over to Richard.
I'm looking further into our packet to find the drawing.
It's about the fifth or sixth drawing into the packet.
Okay. As a complete submittal, in other words, looking not only at this particular drawing, but at other drawings that are in this complete set. I think we've got everything we need for the preliminary plat. In order to put it on one sheet so that it can be recorded as a final plat, that's gonna be the, the document that's needed at the courthouse to document that we have a development with individually described lots of record that are available for purchase. So even though lot number one here shown the preliminary plat would not be one for, for sale, the lots two through 23 are for individual sale, private residences is the plan. These are the townhomes. So the data that we need, the information that we need is in this entire set of documents. If you wanted to look at contours, you could go to another drawing in this set. The reason that, that we know that everything is here is because the planning of development process required that everything be detailed on the front end so that the planning of development could be approved as a zone. So this is a peculiar zone that is identified only as the Woodlands. In other words, this is the Woodlands BUD, and there's not another one. And likely to not be another one identical to this. So we know that we've got the data. I think what we need to do is just go ahead and have all of the information that normally shows up on a preliminary plat to be put on one sheet. And then that one sheet could be approved as preliminary plat, and then certainly follow that with the final plat. And again, everything we need is in this document set.
Agreed. But the problem is that we, the commission has to have confidence that all the requirements of the subdivision regulations are met in a preliminary plat. That's what we need to know.
Yes. Well, on that single sheet by itself, everything is not shown on that single sheet. If you go back to the sheet that's called zoning plan, page one, that contains everything but the contour lines, best I can tell. And then we need the signature blocks, obviously, for the planning commission and the surveyor and the engineer. So creating that sheet is something that we need to see. But as far as knowing that the data is available and that we have it, we have the data. This would, again, be something that we've, we've not we said we're gonna cease doing, which is, you know, approving something on a contingency, and the contingency would be taking all of this information we have, putting it on one page.
For the benefit of the commission, I'm gonna read the section from the zoning code. The first step in the process of preparing the long form final development plan is preparation and submission of a preliminary plat which conforms to the procedures and requirements of the Sherwood Land Subdivision and Development Code. Following that, the final development plan, which is approved by the enforcement officer slash city engineer, includes all of the documentation that's required plus the final plat. The final plat obviously needs to be broken out separately for purposes of recording. But what I'm interested in right now, in order to meet the requirements of this code, is that if all the information is, is present, but it's just not in the right standalone document, that we need to get that standalone document to be signed and execute. And if you're telling me, if you're telling us that all the information is there, it just needs to be put on that one sheet, then I think the commission could vote on it if we wish to.
From, from what I've seen in these documents over the last year that we studied this, all of the information is present.
Gentlemen? What's your pleasure on approving or tabling a preliminary plat?
I move we approve the preliminary plat. Gillum?
Yeah, second, Blake, because I do see all the information. So I think they could create the document that we need.
Knight?
Yes.
Martin?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Bruno?
Hi.
Gillum?
Hi.
The second part of this is that you've received a lot of documentation that ultimately is part of the, the final development plan, and the final development plan must conform in virtually all respects to the documentation that was approved by ordinance by the city council. It includes a lot more detailed information. Like I said, it is approved. It includes a lot more detailed information. Like I said, it is approved by the engineer, the city engineer, which it also includes the final platte. We don't need to approve this, so we're not going to approve it tonight. That's subject to the approval of the city engineer. However, because it was advertised as a public hearing, we can open that up. If anybody wishes to have comments, I'll open that public hearing right now. Does anybody wish to speak to this? It is not a site plan. It is a draft of the final development plan. Did anybody send in comments to, to wish to be read, Candy?
There were no comments for this item.
Is anybody in the audience online wish to speak? Hearing nothing, I'll close the public hearing. That's all we need to do unless you guys have any questions about what you saw.
We're ready to move on.
It's in your court, Richard. Yes.
Yeah, well, I don't have any further comments to make on this, no.
A rezone request at Lot A, Wandering Ridge subdivision, Menson Engineering Agent, public hearing. So this is a rezone request for Lot A, Wandering Ridge subdivision. The applicant requests for a C three conditional use. The current zoning is C three. And of course, the land use plan is office buffer area. I will note that this is a vacant lot, it's been vacant and zoned accordingly. So they're just requesting a conditional use to potentially develop a mini storage facility in the future. So staff supports the commission's approval.
Did they provide any information regarding the required special conditions that attach to a mini storage in C three?
Yes, and they were made aware of those requirements whenever they initially applied. And I think they are online. The applicant is attending this meeting if they have any more detailed questions.
Yeah, Josh, hearing, I'm also here with the owner, Jim Jezz. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, gentlemen, this is a use that is permitted in C three, subject to conditions. This is one of those rare uses where there are rigid locked in conditions that have to be met. So what I'm hearing from staff is that they have been met?
Yeah, yes, we're aware of all the conditions for mini storage facilities outlined in fourteen ten oh three. And then also the, you know, the building requirements and was it fourteen ten ten? So we're, we're well aware of all the requirements from Sherwood.
Okay, and gentlemen, the conditions, it is possible to add conditions to this depending on your assessment of how this relates to the, the adjoining properties. But before we get into that, is there anybody, I'll open a public hearing, Candy, did anybody wish to be heard?
No comments were sent in on this item.
Does anybody online wish to speak to this? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, your comments? Well, I'll open it up. I want to, and I looked at the site and man, it, it is going to really block the view of that subdivision up there. I think that fifty foot buffer has really got to be screened significantly to protect those houses up there, my own self. And I, I would want to know what the buffering was before I would be comfortable approving this. And I haven't seen a plan on that that I know of.
You, you should have a site plan sketch of, of showing how we're going to lay out the property and we are showing the required fifty foot buffer between the residential and the commercial.
What's in that buffer?
It's going to be, right now, there's nothing. There's some shrubs. We're gonna, it looks like we're gonna have to add some as, as per your requirements.
Four kind of shrubs.
Sir?
What kind of the shrubs?
Oh, what kind of shrubs? We haven't determined that yet. We're, we're just in the conditional use phase, but we can work all that out now or, or whenever we submit for a site plan review. It just says, it just, that designates fast growing dense evergreen foliage is required and, and we plan to meet that requirement.
What, what do you mean by fast growing?
That's just, I'm just reading from your requirements in the, in the code.
What would you propose? The reason I'm asking, this is a two-step process. First, we want to be comfortable about what are conditions that we think are relevant to protect those adjacent residential units. And following this, if the council approves of this, then there's going to be a site plan review and we may get more detailed on that. But and then as a condition, that becomes part of an ordinance. So I want to be clear about that.
Okay, well, I, I don't have any species picked out right now. Plan to, we, we will definitely, we'll meet all the requirements worth by City of Sherwood. If there's a specific species that you want us to, then we'd be, definitely be open to that.
Would you be open to fancy?
No.
Right now, no. The way this is set up is the, the, the mini storage facility is not going to be accessed from the side of the residents. So that's going to be, that, the building's actually going to act as a barrier. So as a fence, there's not going to be a fence on that side for security purposes. The building's going to act as the fence.
Mr. Chairman, Richard Penn, city engineer, I recall an application for an expansion of a storage facility a couple of years ago. And in that process, it abud, the property abutted an R three apartments. And being residential, the requirement then was for visual, it was the buffer, but it was the visual screening, as I recall, was part of that. And the visual screening can be achieved either with a fence of sufficient height, which our fence ordinance limits that to a maximum of eight feet. And I believe we can actually review that height based on extenuating circumstances to where if it needed to go to ten feet, it could. But the objective being to screen the facility from the adjacent residential property. So if the objective of the applicant is to have that open to visual observation of the residents, in other words, people living there could keep an eye on it. If they see anything, the objective would be for them to be able to see anything nefarious going on. I think that is not meeting the objective that I understand the screening is supposed to achieve. So back to the idea of screening, the fifty foot buffer, the purpose of that, as I understand it, was for some way to achieve sound dampening between the facility and the residential as well as visual to obscure that visually. Now, obviously, you know, we can discuss that and the pros and cons of that in this particular location. And we've certainly got room to place conditions that we think are appropriate. So I'm not necessarily promoting the screening as appropriate, but I am wanting to recognize that we had this discussion a couple of years ago and that the screening was a significant part of that discussion and that it had to be tall enough to achieve a, a full, to fully obscure that structure.
I've recently had an issue of a business adjoining a residential property that created a, a real problem for that property. When I went out there, what struck me is that the elevation of the, the property behind these houses is pretty close to the elevation of the houses themselves. So my, my question is, how tall are these ten buildings? That's a lot of buildings going to be.
Well, typically, mini stores at the eve height is about eight feet. And then it slopes up, you know, but the roof is about a one on twelve pitch. They're not going to be as tall as a typical commercial building.
So you're going only one story?
Correct, only one story. We, we want to eve this buffer or, or do whatever we need to with the buffer. I, I, it was my understanding that the vegetative fifty foot buffer, once you get things growing in there, that that kind of acts as screening. But I mean, we can definitely work with whatever's required.
Sir?
Well, I noticed that a number of the houses already up there do have, appears to be some evergreens on the backside of their property. I just want to make sure that there is sufficient screening to, so that they're not looking at a mass of buildings in their backyard.
Sir, this is Jim Jezz. I own the property. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We're, my son and myself are building those homes for those people. We're building the storage units and we want a very good looking buffer and screening. But we, you know, the evergreens or whatever trees we pick out will, you know, follow your stipulations. And we will make it look good for those people.
Yeah, the proof is going to be in the site plan.
Yes, definitely. And as far as a fence goes, you've already got a building there. And then, then you have a fence. It, it just seems a little redundant to have a beautiful buffer and then a fence and buildings.
I'm not adamant about a fence. I just want some screening.
You're going to get screening. It's going to look good. It is absolutely, we'll get it on the site plan and everything and you're going to like. My son's the landscaper too, you know, so special deals on trees and shrub thing. So we can get something that really makes it look good.
Hey, gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Well, this is Gillum. I think the, the vegetative buffer ought to be thick. It ought to be deep and it ought to be high. So I'm thinking this vegetative buffer ought to be maybe fifteen feet deep and twelve feet high. I, I think the people in the development up there need to look out their back window and, and not see any ten buildings.
Well, if you do that, you're sort of clouding the picture. I mean, the buildings are, are going to, you know, look good. They're going to be uniform. And the, your buffer needs to have, yeah, you're right, twelve, twelve foot by fifteen foot high. That, you know, those trees out there now are that. And, and I, and I'll go along with you, yes, on the, on the vegetation. But you don't want a wall of vegetation. You, you want it to look good. I mean, everybody knows that the buildings are sitting there. You know, so you want, you want some nice landscaping done.
I agree.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what we've recently learned from another project where we were looking at basically properties on a hillside, I just looked at another information source that I've got checking contours of this area. And the houses, and it, it is, as I recall this, I've been there and, and seen this, this site. The houses are on the natural grades, more or less ten feet higher than the front of the property for the storage buildings are. So assuming that the storage building site is graded and leveled to some extent, there's already a height advantage from the houses themselves. If somebody had their own six foot privacy fence on one of those houses with the storage buildings being lower from, you know, relative to their property with the storage buildings being downhill, you know, it's likely that they're not going to be seeing those buildings anyway. So a buffer, vegetative buffer, something that's in that range of ten, twelve feet tall and certainly the natural trees that are there, if there's whatever remains. That is going to be, that's going to be pretty effective. Now, as far as
Anything that lowers the elevation on the end, it's closest to the houses as a plus.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think this is in the, just the context, the, the elevations are working in our favor is what I'd like, like the commission to understand. This is, it's working in our favor. So I think that the, the developers got the opportunity to put something that's a reasonable height in there that will add something to obscure those buildings.
Almost wish that enormous wall at the, on the road weren't quite so high.
Yeah.
But it is what it is. Other comments?
I just want to make one. Said, have we not, are we not at a saturation level for many storages along one oh seven? My God, we, we had one just out there within a mile, a huge one. Coming back all the way through gravel ridge or some, then all the way back down by Maryland is another huge one.
That question keeps coming up, but it's a permitted use and we really can't tell them that they can't do it. And we have to be careful about that.
Well, I understand that.
There are those who would agree with you. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
So what's Richard's recommendation with chair?
I believe we need to define what we mean by the, what goes into the buffer zone. And Mr. Gillum made a, a suggestion there. I think it's, you know, the, the thickness of it, I think is debatable. The, the height of it, I think is probably the, the more critical component. So you know, vegetation that has the capability to to mature in the, you know, ten to twelve foot range. I think about any kind of natural shrubs or, you know, not, I'm not suggesting reds or pears, just using that as an example. That's, that's the type of, that is the type of, of tree that's going to reach that height.
If I recollect, the current landscaping regulations say they have to reach a mature height within three years.
That's correct.
So we're talking twelve to fifteen feet within three years. So we're talking twelve to fifteen feet within three years. Uh if that's in the code, then we simply want that to to be a condition on this.
I believe so, yes.
Is there a motion with that additional condition?
So move like.
Danny and I second.
And the motion is to approve or recommend approval of the conditional use. Uh subject to the additional condition of. Planting in the buffer of trees that will reach fifteen, twelve to fifteen foot maturity in three years.
That is correct.
Thank you both.
Night.
Yes.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Bruno.
No.
Gillum.
No.
Motion to approve passes three to two.
Thank you. Thank you.
Amend the land use plan at five oh two east hill from office buffer area conservation and suburban single family to large scale multifamily. Whitlow Engineering, and this is a public hearing.
So this applicant's request is to amend the land use plan at five oh two east hill. Uh their request is large scale multifamily, um as Candy just stated, currently it's conservation. Suburban, single family and office buffer area. Um I just wanted to note that the current zoning is R two. Um. And applicants request, um staff sees issues with that, just based um on the current R two zoning. Um. And the buildable area. Um and I just wanted to do this little map for a visual context. The parcel isn't drawn out on there, but where the hatch, um red and blue area are, that's the FEMA defined regulatory floodway. And during a one hundred year flood event, that is where the water moves the quickest and the fastest. Um so I would say a third of this property is flood plain to some degree. So I do think. Um. That the R two's zoning small scale is more in line than the applicant's request of the large scale multifamily. So staff sees issues with amending the land use plans.
Okay, because it's a request to amend the land use plan, this requires a public hearing. Does anybody indicated Candy that they wish their comments to be read?
We have nine comments. Um that we have received. Um would you let me just start?
Ronald C. O'Neil at five oh one East Lee Avenue. To Sherwood Planning Commission regarding January Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Adjustment Meetings. Agenda item number three, amend ladies' plan at five oh two East Hill Avenue. Dear sir or madam, I recently became aware of the request by Renew Properties LLC to amend the land use plan at five oh two East Hill Avenue. From office buffer area conservation and suburban single family to large scale multifamily. For reference, my property is located on the corner of East Lee Avenue and Overton Cove. After recently moving to my home at five oh one East Lee Avenue, I became highly concerned with the water runoff behind my house and flowing under. And usually over Overton Cove and into the waterway below. Rain runoff often occurs, I'm sorry, rain runoff often covers the roadway and backs up from the creek. To the lower end of my property. The amount of water back backup often causes traffic problems on Lee Avenue. Additionally, when rain is heavy or there are other roadway issues, traffic will reroute from Hollywood one oh seven onto Lee Avenue. Only to find that the roadway is flooded and cars must turn around and go back up the hill. These problems have caused me to see that there are already flooding problems and there are even worse potential flooding problems in this area. The problem appears to be twofold. A, rain in this area comes down so hard and fast that it floods faster than it can drain. This leads to inadequate drainage. B, excessive runoff appears to come from businesses near the intersection of Hollywood one oh seven and Hill Avenue. Water is increased by the flat parking lots around those buildings where rainwater. Water pours downhill into our drainage ditches, roads and waterways. Therefore, I respectfully ask that this request to change zoning be denied for the following reasons. One, those living in this area are already dealing with flooding problems and continual property damage from huge amounts. Of runoff and lack of water with most every rainstorm. Two, adding multi-family housing will create more paved areas and water will actually flow down, filling into an area that currently has overloaded waterways. Three, living in this area causes us to have great risk of flooding and any additional water could completely destroy our homes, structures and landscaping. Four, additional traffic along Lee Avenue to access Regan Road. Will create an unbearable traffic burden to this area, not to mention more water runoff when Regan Road is paved up to new structures. Lee Avenue between Hollywood one oh seven and Holiday Road already has a residential area. Again, I beg the planning commission to deny the request. To amend the land use plan at five oh two East Hill Avenue. Additionally, I would like to discuss the problems listed in this email with Sherwood waterway engineers as soon as possible. Respectfully submitted Ronald C. O'Neil.
Second one.
Yes.
Ellen Freeman, one Overton Cove. Mike and I would like to share our concerns regarding the rezoning of the lot that sits behind our backyard. And looks into our vendor windows. And by the way, when was the city of Sherwood going to let us know about this potential rezoning? We found out from our neighbor and we didn't know how he found out. When we moved to one Overton Cove, Sherwood, the piece of property behind us was some commercial. Then the property, we were told, was rezoned for one family home. Which our ne- neighbor also told us. Now, our neighbor just informed us yesterday. That it was once again being considered for multi-story apartments. We have lived in this quiet crappy neighborhood since nineteen ninety-three. We do not want apartment dwellers living in a multi-story apartment staring into our bedroom windows or backyards. There are several issues that we can see from building a large scale multifamily building. From all the people in this neighborhood and on Riley Road and up and down Lee Avenue and Kill Avenue. Which should be a concern for the city of Sherwood. Number one, the lot is too small for this type of structure. Two, the lot is low mine piece of property that would take much landfill. Three, the landfill would put an undue pressure on our area where water runs across East Lee. Holly Road and the newly constructed bridge on East Lee. Four, on Riley Road next to Rick's Shopley's, with any substantial rain, the sewage lid blows off. And we're all sewage strained. This is something the city of Sherwood should be concerned about and fixed immediately. We have no idea how this is affecting our drinking water. Shouldn't residents, shouldn't current residents health and safety be the first priority without adding a multi-story apartment building? And the purported residents adding to the city's plumbing problems? Five, there will only be one official entry slash exit point for the property, which would be hazardous for renters, fire department. Police, et cetera. Six, the easement, quote, they, end quote, are suggesting of fifteen feet is not sufficient. Shouldn't city of Sherwood council members override everyone's concerns, not only the ones we can think of in two days notice? I hope you have a very good budget to take care of things our little city requires now, to which we are not privy. Although I do know the little ditch that runs around our property cannot handle a substantial rainfall. Half or more of our front yards overflows. From the drainage ditch, water overflows the little bridge on East Lee that was rebuilt a couple of years ago. And the sewage cap popped off next to Rick Shopley's house spewing out wall sewage. Rick is the one who goes and replaces the lid temporarily. We looked out last night and there was a little geyser spewing sewage. When is the city gonna take our needs into consideration and repair? We are your long-term property owners who already pay too much in property taxes. What are you using our money for? From Dean and Helen Freeman.
Number three.
Yes.
Osborne at eleven five eleven Crystal Face Circle North Rock, Arkansas, seven two one one three. Dear zoning committee members, my name is Bob Osborne and I have owned property insurance for over fifty years. I object to line item three, amending the zoning, ladies' plan for five oh two East Hill Avenue. Currently zoned R two in conservation area and allowing a large scale multifamily development. I own multiple parcels of land surrounding this property. First of all, I was never notified about this possible rezoning and only by accident found out it was on the city planning agenda. Secondly, Winter Creek flows directly across five oh two East Hill Avenue and to cross multiple parcels of my lands and other property owners. Altering, changing or displacing a creek adversely impacts each of them. My concern is that building a multifamily complex with suitable and substantial parking across. The property will directly impact the surrounding owner's land, further diminishing the absorption factor. And causing additional stress on Winter Creek and its tributaries. The parking lot alone or part of a large multifamily project could produce runoff from cars leaching and spilling over directly into Winter Creek. Affecting property owners for the entire length of the creek. I have seen an increase in water and trash in the creek since Walmart constructed its building at parking lot. Off of Hollywood one oh seven at the edge of Winter Creek, diminishing the water absorption. This will only worsen if we continue to abuse our land dedicated to conservation or suburban single family usage. Below are seven immediate parcels of land that are rezoning five oh two East Hill directly in time because of Winter Creek flow direction. A parcel two three S zero two four zero three zero zero four zero zero call. B parcel number two three S zero two four zero three zero zero three zero zero call. C parcel number two three S zero two four zero 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 three one zero zero Sanders. D parcel number two three S zero two four zero 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 two nine zero zero Freeman. E parcel number two three S zero two four zero 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 two zero 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 Osborne Lacing. F parcel number two three S zero two four zero 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 three seven zero zero Osborne Lacing. G parcel number two three S zero two four zero 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 three six zero one Mark Osborne. Below are four additional parcels that are joined five oh two East Hill and will be adversely affected by the rezoning. Number one, parcel number two three S zero two four zero 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 three five zero zero White. Two, parcel number two three S zero two four zero 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 three four zero one Shopley. Three, parcel number two three S zero two four zero 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 two nine zero zero Freeman. Four, parcel number two three S zero four zero 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 three one zero zero Sanders. Multiple studies on the impact of urbanization along and across streams and tributaries have shown that expected consequences of urban development and displacement of natural tributaries. Increase the frequency and severity of flooding, channel and land erosion and destruction of aquatic habitat and chemical contamination. The effect could adversely affect. Property in Sherwood for miles. Thank you for allowing me to voice my thoughts and concerns. Sincerely yours, Bob Osborne owner.
Sanders at two Overton Cove. Hello, my name is Nikita Sanders. I'm the property owner of two Overton Cove. My concerns for a multi-family dwelling adjacent to my property are as follows. Privacy directly to my backyard and the windows directly in the back of my house. To address this issue, I would be pleased if a fifty to seventy-five feet easement was in place to help with the issue as well as a ten feet high brick. High brick privacy fence. Also, multi-family dwelling has multiple dumpsters that would attract additional. As well as the smell that could affect my neighbors and myself. This will also directly affect my property value if I should choose to sell in the future. Please consider all these things before allowing this decision on the development.
Early Stevens Bend at four sixteen East Lee Avenue. To whom it may concern regarding January eleven twenty twenty-two Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Adjustment Meeting. Number three, amend the land use plan at five oh two East Hill Avenue from office buffer area. Conservation and suburban sing- suburban single family to large scale multifamily, Willow Engineering Agent Public hearing. I have lived on East Lee for over fifty years. Every so many years. Some company wants to build large scale multifamily dwellings between East Lee and Kill Avenue. In the past, this has always been voted down because of the narrow street, no sidewalks on East Lee in this area. A creek that floods after heavy rains that is causing damage to our property plus trash that we must clean out after the floods. These problems have not been rectified in over fifty years. Why would the council continue to consider building large scale multifamily dwelling on this land? This land is not suitable for a single or multi-family dwelling. Thank you for your time. Shirley Stevens Bend.
For Rebecca White at four twenty-three East Lee Avenue. Attention Planning Commission and Board of Zoning. I am immensely concerned with issue number three. My name is Rebecca White. I own and have lived at four twenty-three East Lee Avenue for over forty years, which is directly behind five oh two East Hill Avenue. I love my location and want to remain there until the Lord takes me home. However, that does not mean it is a perfect situation. I've had expensive flood repairs that insurance has not covered. And as the city knows, I have had issues with my trash can washing away numerous times when it rains. And they have had to remove debris and large rocks from East Lee Avenue Road. Also, the water company as well aware of the situation. They have had to come out numerous times and replace the manhole cover on Regan Road. And the water meter cover in the ditch at the end of Regan come off with the water flow. It is that strong, you should see some of the boulders that it washes up on the road. The city is well aware of this spot. They put roadblocks and calls up on East Lee Avenue when they know it's going to rain hard. Regan Road Blacktop completely washed out and the bridge on East Lee was out for about two years in the past from flooding. And it continues to wash any gravel or any attempt to fill in the road. I'm shocked that the city would even consider allowing any structures with any mass or elevations on that property. I can imagine a parking lot would be like putting a water slide back there and all the water headed at me. And even worse, it wouldn't be just water, it would be any fluid leaking from cars or trash. All that toxicity heading straight for me. And by the way, I don't know how to swim. But seriously, if you don't take the word of someone who has observed this property for over forty years and this project is somehow approved. This multi-family housing community will directly affect the land value of all the surrounding properties and I'm requesting at least. A fifty foot easement to give me privacy. And a concrete brick ten foot wall to help decrease noise levels due to multi-family out, multi-level housing. I think if this gets rezoned, all neighboring properties should get at least fifty foot easement for privacy if the housing is going to be two-story. It would look right into the rear of my home and if they have outside decks. Or balconies, it will leave me no privacy. It could also increase crime and safety issues with a flex of people in and out. Please consider all factors before allowing this project to continue, continue. I was not notified by the city of Sherwood on this matter. A concern they were brought into my attention, I'm responding because I want to protect my quality of life and my safety and property value. There is also a lot of beautiful wildlife, including deer, squirrels, a variety of birds, rabbits, et cetera. That enjoy my backyard and would hate to see them run off. Wishing you all a blessed new year. Thank you, Rebecca White.
Mark Osborne. No address given. I'm here to address the planning of five oh two East Hill. This project came up years ago for single family homes. It was denied due to the narrow entrance and concern of emergency vehicles only having one way to access the property. Later, without notifying anyone, it was rezoned to single family conservation. Concerns regarding rezoning were not followed as I nor anyone else I know of affected. By this zoning change was notified. The property directly downstream of Winter Creek that runs beside five oh one East Hill property. My concern is that runoff water from paved areas added to the creek will cause more damage to my property. And others along Winter Creek. The spillway at five twenty-five East Lee and the bridge located on East Lee Avenue. Has been damaged due to flooding recently. East Lee Avenue Windtime Bridge are closed at least ten times a year due to flooding from this creek. Any paving will increase water flow and trash into the stream and onto other surrounding properties. And will cause more property damage. The adjacent land next to the building site is also considered a wetland. The Corps of Engineering should issue a permit before any project of this magnitude is considered on this property. I would like to see FEMA studies on damage caused by water runoff from cars leaking fuel and oil into natural streams. These multi-family housing communities will directly affect the land value of all surrounding properties. I do not think this is a good location for this development. Another concern is I own part of Regan Road and the runoff from five oh two East Hill washes any gravel or any repairs done to it. Any built project will significantly affect my property and others around it. This should be an essential aspect before anything is approved. Others who are concerned with how it will affect property values reached out to me about this project. Due to the way it was handled, if this moves forward, I and others have sought legal counsel and will move forward with that option to protect our property. Thank you. Mark Osborne.
Keith Heslip at three Overton Cove. To the City of Sherwood Planning Commission. I would like to voice my concerns for the property being considered permanent five oh two East Kill Avenue from office buffer area conservation and suburban single family to large scale multifamily. One, property not suitable for large scale multifamily is in the flood zone. Two, not appropriate backing up to quiet residential housing. Three, it will bring more lining to the adjoining property. Four, no suitable ingress or egress from the property. Five, if it moves forward, it would need a brick or block property dividing fence on the property line. Would fences do not work? People will break boards and go through fence. Six, we would require a fifty foot buffer zone from the property line for noise buffer. Seven, it needs to stay a green zone no larger than the property is currently with the creek running on the east side. On my behalf, Keith Heslip owner, Joanne Heslip tenant.
Rick Shockley, one oh one Regan Road. As a resident at one oh one Regan Road for over thirty years, I write today in stern opposition to a series of zoning actions recently taken by the City of Sherwood as regards the parcel locally known as five oh two East Kill here and after quote unquote the subject property. Sherwood, Arkansas. Initially, it was zoned as office buffer area conservation. Subsequently, and without adequate lawful notice, it was rezoned to suburban single family. Thereafter, and without adequate lawful notice, it was rezoned to large scale multifamily. These rezoning actions were in obvious and open disregard to various statutes and regulations regarding the rezoning process and notice of proposed rezoning actions affecting property owners adjacent to the subject property. My proposition is this. Compliance with established zoning regulations and repetitive zoning actions which purport to change the prior zoning from office buffer area conservation, we and are void. Accordingly, the rezoning process must begin anew with adequate notices, public hearing, and resultant zoning action, if any. As recently demonstrated, this area of Sherwood is already beyond its carrying capacity for existing development insofar as current sanitary sewer and stormwater runoff capacities are concerned. The storm-related recent massive discharge of sewer affluent into Winter Creek and its downstream confluences including Five Mile Creek and ultimately the Arkansas River clearly and convincingly demonstrate the current inadequacy of these critical wastewater management systems to keep up with current drainage requirements for the area. This has been a problem since the City of Sherwood permitted the building of the nearby Walmart supercenter. The site has a huge drainage footprint but no runoff buffering between its paved area and the city storm runoff system. While the resulting sanitary sewer leakage appears to be related to each other, it is unknown whether or not the current sewer system is adequate to keep pace with existing habitation, let alone a large scale construction project that would place immense burden on the existing infrastructure. In exploring this sewage leak issue immediately before this letter was written, I learned that the City of North Little Rock, not Sherwood, is responsible for the sewer system. I will strongly campaign against any proposed issuance of a sewer tap permit by either North Little Rock or Sherwood for this subject property. When and if proper zoning, rezoning process ensues for the subject property, please be aware I am requesting a fifty foot variance on all sides of the property as a buffer zone between the property at issue and adjacent property partial boundaries, regardless of how it's reasoned. It is in my sincere desire to avoid litigation. Nevertheless, if the City of Sherwood persists in what I view as a clear and open case of deliberate avoidance of compliance with zoning, rezoning regulations, notices, and adequate public hearings on such proposals, I will proceed to sue court with. Regards, Rick Shockley.
Okay, that was the end of all the public comments. You're muted. Sorry, that was correct. Rob, you're muted.
See, this is Lucian Dillon. I've been using that bridge there for forty seven years. And
Lucian?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Give me a second first. I want to find out if there's anybody who is online that would like to speak to the commission.
Okay.
Is there anybody that wishes to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, my name is, uh, with the services. I'm representing the clients in this case who wish to see the amendment, but I will yield to see if there's any other opposition before I say my piece, but but I would like to maybe clarify on our request a little bit further if there's no other public comments at this time.
Go ahead.
We we're very aware of, appreciate the concerns of the citizens there. And, you know, understandably, you know, this, we're very aware that there is a large drainage area and a regulatory flood plain that runs along the east side of this property. And that is partially one of the reasons that we bring you this request. The current zoning was zoned by right is R two. And if I understand your regulation correctly, R two allows a, is a multifamily type zoning, but it allows for only like a fourplex, maximum of fourplex type unit across the site. And I believe there's a previous site plan approved for this. I can't remember what the unit count was on it. Maybe twenty seven units. So the acreage supports up to forty, forty units if I'd done my calculation correctly. Under a fourplex type development. And that in itself is kind of one of the reasons we're seeking to for the large scale multifamily. The fourplex type setup kind of promotes basically sprawl across the site. The fourplex itself, you know, suggests we've got to take a bigger area to get the density to make this economically feasible to develop. So one of the things that the multifamily, the large scale multifamily does is it allows us to get the same number of units within a vertical construction footprint. So this side in particular where we got a very large flood plain on the east side, the vertical structure, the vertical construction in like a single multifamily structure would be the best way that we could take advantage of the sites and have an efficient site plan and buffer and, you know, the amenities we want to have on the site. You know, I'm not, of course, now's not really the time to get back into the technical aspects of the drainage and the runoff and stuff, but I mean, quite simply is, I mean, in our, the current zoning of the R two, I mean, it allows for just as much permeable area as the multifamily, you know, multifamily structure. So we're hoping, you know, the commission will have consideration. And another clarification, we're not seeking rezoning at this time. We're really just seeking a master land use plan amendment so that we can have an option to come back as either a multifamily or a planned unit development. Honestly, planned unit development, we think probably suits this site more more than a straight R three would because we can address those very specific concerns on the front end with a site plan. So that gives you some background as to why we're seeking the large scale multifamily. Because we feel that the vertical construction under a multifamily structure is more conducive on this property than a spread out fourplex, fourplex units that won't allow us to take advantage of going vertical and, you know, leaves us less space for amenities and trails and clubhouse and pools and things of that nature. One thing that I am curious about that I'm not got a little bit different opinion, differing opinions on at the end of this is with the current R two, I've done kind of stated that we, you know, we would like to come back as with some type of planned unit development, depending on how the commission votes in this meeting. I didn't know if the R two would allow us to come back as kind of what we're seeking without having to do an amendment to the master land use plan. If anybody wants to comment on that, I'd, you know, love to listen, but because if we, if we can come back as a with a multi-unit structure and under planned development, if the R two allows that, you know, we're certainly happy to do it, to do that, but from what we understood and were told that we needed to seek the master land use plan amendment first to change the underlying zoning before we came back with any, any multifamily type presentation.
I will yield to staff on that question.
So the R two, the current zoning right now is for small scale multifamily. So you would have to submit some type of plan to us. That way we could evaluate that against our regulations. We can't tell you yes or no without seeing something first. As for the PUD, that's its own zoning classification. Again, you would have to submit following the PUD guidelines that are outlined in the zoning code to our office. I can't, we can't give you an answer without seeing something.
Well, it's my understanding that the underlying zoning has to support the PUD. So we're R two, we're kind of in a gray, I feel like we're in a gray area in R two. The R two is a multifamily zone, but it's a fourplex multifamily. So I didn't know if there was enough flexibility there that, you know, hey, if we come back with a comparable density but in a, in a single structure and demonstrate the efficiency, if that would be something the staff would consider. You know, of course, we, you know, we want to try to get some idea before we, you know, the PUD is a very detailed submission. So we want to get clarification that we can even submit you know, before we went much further.
It's a little premature to make any recommendations or reactions to that. Depending on what happens tonight, then I would suggest you read the regulations and determine for yourself what's in the best interest going forward.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, the one, the one thing we knew for sure is that if we, if we did, if the commission did see fit to rezon the master land use plan to large scale multifamily, that would at least, you know, that would give us the maximum flexibility to come back as either a straight rezoned or a planned unit development for that. So that would, that was our first step and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Adam. Or anybody else that wishes to be heard? Hearing none. I'm closing the public hearing. Lucian, you wish to speak?
Yes. I've lived, like I said, I've been crossing the little bridge there for forty seven years. And I've seen it flood quite a few times and I've gone down Lee Avenue and had to turn around and go a different way. And what has happened is the development up north of Keel. The the two, the mini Walmart and the big Walmart turned grass fields into paved areas. And they so the runoff that's coming down through there now is tremendous compared to what it originally was. And one thing about it, I think before anybody builds anything in this area, they need, someone needs to do a very careful flood area analysis to see the amount of water that comes through there now is tremendous. Matter of fact, this, this piece of property has a long history. It's the only property I know of in Sherwood that ever was zoned R two. Rick Shockley lives there. I've, I've heard him opine his problems with the creek many times, but anyway. I think the main thing is if someone did a true water runoff analysis of that creek, they would find out you can't build anything in there, nothing. Because the water, I've seen the water go over that bridge three feet deep. It's a nice little piece of property, but I don't think it's buildable. That's all I've got to say.
I'm not mistaken. I think water over there has gone over Keel at times.
Yes, it has. That's right.
Any other commissioner have comments?
Steve?
I agree with Lucian. I think that that would be foolish to even build anything in there because of all the flooding. It's a natural kind of a river or creek or whatever you want to call it. And it's going to remain natural no matter what you're going to do.
Tammy?
I don't have any comment. I've just been interested to listen to it.
Mike?
No, sir. I don't have anything to add.
Well, my reaction is that that property has real constraints. I don't think it's appropriate for a much higher density than either what the current zoning allows or what the land use plan requires. So I'd have a real problem with considering much higher densities.
We need a motion.
Being said, Mr. Chairman, I move we deny the request.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Knight?
All the rules. And remember, if you vote aye, you're voting to deny.
Knight?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Dillon?
Aye.
The request is denied, but land use plan stays as is.
Old business?
I will bring up one thing under kind of old business. You've heard me talk in the past about the work that's being done on the Little Rock Air Force Base compatible use study and implementation plan. Committee held a meeting this week and they're starting to work on trying to figure out what kind of legislation might be necessary in order to clarify where the city's responsibilities lie. Because right now there's a question about whether Sherwood and Jacksonville and North Little Rock need to zone and implement subdivision regulations five miles beyond their boundaries for something less. That's ongoing. Stay tuned. New business.
Jim Von Tumlin, code revisions update.
Can you hear me, everybody?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I don't know whether I have good news or bad news for you tonight. The news is, and you can evaluate it from your own perspective, is that you will be receiving a marked up copy of the first draft, first run through of the zoning code revisions that we've been working on. I, I believe I've, if I may speak for Candy, she'll get it to you in whatever form you desire, but, uh, I sent it to the, uh, the city. It's a, it's a bit of a chore to go through this thing because what you'll see is that what we're recommending to be omitted is, is, has a strike through. And what we're recommending to be added has, is underlined. And, uh, things that will remain the same, of course, are, are neither. And there are some real typing glitches in there and they are entirely my fault. I'm not a very good typist and I typed this whole thing. So, uh, ultimately, if we proceed successfully, I'm sure that, uh, Mrs. Osery will step in and add some professionalism typing and get it so it's readable. But, uh, just a word or two, you might look at the landscaping, uh, section. I don't normally, uh, I make it a rule. I don't copy other cities' stuff. But I did copy a, a, a landscape code, uh, just, and then I've revised it some. But this is one that was presented in another city, uh, a year or so ago, and it's worked out very well. It's, it's kind of understandable. The staff doesn't have a problem with it. Uh, developers seem to be okay with it. It's, uh, it, it just seems to be a lot more readable and understandable than the, the current landscaping regulations that the city has. So you might look at that. Some of the other things we've talked about. It's interesting. We're, we're kind of like, starting to look now at the subdivision, land subdivision and development code. And it's interesting, uh, our planning doctrine says y- y- you act as three, as three separate categories, since you are the board of adjustments as well. That, and you, you, you're going to see all three tonight, so bearing in mind you have, have various requests after I finish. And when you look at the zoning code, you're in a legislative capacity. You actually, the legislature has delegated to you the, the authority to plan and recommend ordinances to the city. When you look at the subdivision code, you're, you move to an administrative uh, posture whereby your only job is to make sure that a plat meets the minimum requirements, uh, of the city subdivision code. And as, as for that reason, i- if you want to regulate something in the subdivision code, you better be real sure it's in there because it's not like the old days when cities used to negotiate subdivision matters with the, uh, developer. It's either got to be in there now or it's not enforceable. But back to the, and, and, and when you look at the variance, you'll be in a quasi judicial phase tonight. So you sort of hit the, hit the trifecta, uh, in tonight's meeting, but we're talking about the zoning code. We'll be talking some with you about the subdivision code as well. But take a look at it. You, uh, the staff notes had reached me. If you would like to have a, uh, some kind of special meeting and, and so we could, uh, toss this thing back and forth. Uh, I, I'll be glad to schedule a meeting with you or we can continue, uh, meeting like this. I won't take up a lot of your time tonight because you have the code now or you will have it. Uh, you can look at it. Uh, it's, I say, it's, it's a little bit of a tough going, but, uh, I think you'll get used to it as you go through it. You'll see a lot of the things have been changed. Uh, I would invite you also to look at the conditional, uh, use section. I, I have a little bit of professional variance, uh, the way I look from, the way I look at conditional uses. And I think the way some of people in the city have looked at them over, over time, they seem to be considered in the city of Sherwood as a, as a rezoning. And that's not the way I've been trained nor is it the way I practiced it over the years. Uh, a conditional use is one that's allowed in a district, is permitted in a district, but it may not be permitted on every site within that district without special review and the addition of some, uh, conditions. And there are threshold conditions, which you talked about to, to, to this evening, uh, that exists no matter what the situation is. And as far as conditional use, there are required conditions that have to be met before you go any further. And then there are conditions that you can add. Uh, I was asked the question earlier, can this, can a planning commission turn down, uh, conditional use? Yes, that's, that's what it's there for, is to say, is this use though, is permitted in the district, is it appropriate on this particular site due to unique conditions of that site? So you might, uh, take a look at that section. We've talked about, uh, some other things. Uh, primarily the, the change in zoning classifications. They've been simplified. I believe that we have it where no one will go to a less advantageous zoning district. We, we should be able to keep most of the zoning districts intact if this thing goes through. So, uh, without keeping you on, I, I'll, uh, answer any questions you might have and, uh, let you look at that and we can get back together either uh, a- any way you choose, either the special meeting or we'll continue to talk about it in your planning commission meeting. So I know you've had a, had a tough night so far already, so I'll sign off, uh, with the, uh, offer to answer questions anybody has.
When do you think we might get a copy of it, yeah?
Uh, there, there, uh, Andy might want to answer this. Uh, she can email them immediately and there may be someone that wants a hard copy. I'll just, I'd have to defer to Candy on that. But the, the city has it there available.
Okay, thank you.
Tomorrow. Rob, you're muted.
I keep doing that. My wife would approve, but that's not appropriate here. My suggestion is to try to take this all in one big bite, chew it off a bit at a time, but study it because there's some serious changes being made here. And don't be afraid to ask questions.
Thank you, Jim. You got? I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Knight?
Yes, ma'am.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye. Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Um, now we are going to have the January eleventh meeting of Board of Zoning Adjustment. Uh, please call the roll.
Knight?
Present.
Martin?
Here.
Middleton?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Dylan?
Here.
You received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
Motion's approved, Blake.
Second.
That's my team. Okay, we have motion to second.
Knight?
Yes.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Next item is an election or of a chairman. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. Milton.
Is there a second?
Milton.
Second, Steve.
A long day.
I don't know who this Milton guy is, but I hear.
But I'm gonna go ahead and change it to Robert Milton.
Okay, Knight?
Yes.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Upstate.
Bruno?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Next is election of a vice chairman. Is there a nomination?
Blake Middleton?
Steve?
I'm sorry, I did that again. I'm reading your name on that. Blake Martin.
I'm not the only one to mess up, Steve.
No, I, I did that a couple of elections ago, the same exact thing. But I was sitting there reading somebody's, some of the names on there and I just did it. I'm sorry.
Only thing you can't mouse up is that we're both Robert.
Yeah, there you go.
I will second that motion.
Okay, Knight?
Yes.
Martin?
Upstate.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Uh, adoption of bylaws, which I did not end up sending out, so I'm not sure how that's going to work.
Are, are there any revisions to what were adopted last year?
No, but according to our bylaws, um, we have to adopt them every year. Um, last time we did it in April, but we had talked about doing it in January with the, um, elections at that time. Do you want to wait? I did not send them out because we didn't discuss them.
Have you all received or seen a copy of the bylaws that we adopted last April?
Yes.
Has anybody not seen them? If you're comfortable with it, we could in effect be voting to approve what we've already approved once before, but do it because it's required in January.
Okay. Make a motion to approve them.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Knight?
Yes, ma'am.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
All right. Um, a variance request of fifteen feet into the twenty five feet regarding that back at twenty four seventeen, Little Ridge Court, Frank Yang owner. Okay, so just.
As this is quasi judicial, I would, uh, swear you in. Shelby, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your statements to the board?
Yes, I do. Um, so just to recap what Candy said, this is a variance request, um, at twenty four seventeen Little Ridge Court. Uh, the request is to reduce that front yard setback from twenty five feet to ten feet. Um, I want to note real quick before we get into it. Um, the applicant on the fifteenth of December twenty one had been approved for a grading permit where they brought in four feet of fill. So they've already been proactive in lifting up the lot to some degree. Um, the request is based on, uh, known flooding. And the staff sees issues with this variance because there's no extraordinary circumstance tied to that lot. Um, the initial hardship was created when these lots were planted. And staff had discussed that, um, with the developers at that time. Um, and the engineer was assuring that these lots could be developed just fine. Um, so staff sees issues and we request, um, that if anything is elevated further, rather than bringing that setback um, towards the curb more, that the structure be elevated itself to continue mitigating the home.
Okay, does the, uh, is the applicant present and wish to speak?
Yes, sir. Hey, Robert, uh, this is Frank Yang. I just want to thank you all for, you know, allowing me to be on the meeting tonight. Thank you for your time.
Before you say anything, uh, I want to swear you in anything, any statement you make to this board will be the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Yeah, again, thank you for your time and I know it's getting late in the day. I know this is the last agenda on the meeting. Um, so yes, my wife and I, you know, we kind of live in Miller's Heights here in Sherwood. We love the area. We recently looked at these two lots, which was originally lot sixteen and seventeen. And we had them replotted due to the lots being, not being as deep as we liked. And that's why we bought two lots and combined them into one. Um, shortly after that, several, several rainfalls had come through there and we've driven by the lot. And with these lots being towards the very end of the cul-de-sac, all that water is running down at a quick pace and it is coming up into our yards. And that, I mean, that's the main hardship that we're dealing with. Um, especially with lot seventeen or now, actually now sixteen A is what these two lots are. Um, and makes a sharp bend to the left right there. So all the congestion is at the edge of our lot and that's what's causing the water to come up more into the lot. Um, I would, I am proposing a fifteen foot allowance into what's now a twenty five foot. Um, just so we can get our house farther away from the creek and to still let us have a somewhat of a backyard for our little girl. Um, as you can see on this drawing, what really hinders us is the curve going into the lot. And if you can see as the house is laid out on here, the garage side is going to be ten foot from the setback. But the left side of the house, I think we're talking almost twenty one, twenty two feet back from the setback. So if you're driving down Little Ridge, if this plans get to prove, you, you can't really tell that my house is going to sit so much farther up than the house that's right next to me. You know? So another hardship that I'm encountering is the thirty foot easement that's coming from the backside of the lot. Um, all the other lots on this Little Ridge Court, the easement on the back of them is only about ten to fifteen feet as opposed to where mine on one side is twenty foot. And in the middle, we're looking at thirty foot easements. So that really narrows down the buildable space that I have if I have to stick five to twenty five foot easement from the front end as well. So that's kind of our take on this.
All right, anybody else that wishes to speak to this? Okay, staffs, speak to us again.
Um, the request, like we were stating, is to have a ten foot setback. Um, it's not even the flooding issue. It's kind of a parking issue as well. Um, vehicles that would fit one vehicle per side in a driveway, where's the rest of the parking going to go? Um, there's multiple things that lead into this. Um, I think the applicant being proactive and going ahead and getting the grading permit and placing fill was a good idea. It's created some form of a buffer. And continuing to elevate the home and bringing that up, um, higher than the finished floor elevation that's noted right here on this map of two ninety eight, um, would, would be the best bet. Um, predating me and some, Richard could speak to it. Uh, when these lots were initially planted, staff had had the conversations with the developer and the engineer that buildability in the future can be an issue due to Gap Creek. Um, and the flooding that's known in the area.
Can I, can I ask something real quick?
Yes.
Um, what, what was that comment about the parking, Candy? Because this is the first time I'm hearing of that concern.
Uh, that was Shelby.
Oh, Shelby, sorry.
Actually spoke, yeah. We're just kind of looking into the whole aspect and I know your initial concern is the flooding and whenever you place that fill. But whenever you're doing a ten foot setback from the curb, um, that includes your parking, your driveway as well.
Right.
So that's going to impact parking to some degree. And who knows in the future, if you decide to go and sell your home, um, who knows if someone moves in and they have a family of fifteen, so they have ten cars, where are all those cars going to park? Um, we're losing parking in the driveway.
Right. And I understand that. And the concrete drive that's shown on this plot plan, you know, not, it's not, I mean, we would extend the parking over to the right a little more just because I know we're so close to the curb. Um, you know, with this plan, I mean, you can easily fit nine cars on here because it's a three car garage.
Richard, do you care to weigh in?
Well, the part that I've recalled most vividly is the uh, original preliminary plat for this land where there were no lots further down on Little Ridge Court. And then the engineer requesting that those The engineer requesting that those be platted into lots and. From a regulatory standpoint, we did not have any regulatory. Flood plane established in there. We went ahead and had. Hydrology and hydraulic study done. On the upper reach of Gap Creek, which basically starts at the top of the watershed up around where the school, high school is, the. Sports complex. On the west side of probably one oh seven comes down past. The current Amy Sanders Library on Johnson and continues down through the two ponds. Either side of Oak Brook and then you get into that. Really hilly and circuitous area where the creek is. Coming past the property in question here just before it gets down. To where the proposed. Fire department is is going on rapid water and between that area and and Brockington is where the. The regulatory, the limit of the study, the regulatory flood plain. That's where it currently. Exists. So we had this upper reach studied just to get an idea. Of what we might be looking at in this area and staff was. Was not promoting that any of these lots be. Platted, but the developer came in with a plan that showed that, you know, the the lots are narrow. And the buildable portion, according to the engineer, was sufficient for. A dwelling that would meet the requirements of the bill of assurance for the subdivision. So. You know, we really didn't have. A regulatory. Crutch to lean on as far as. Defining exactly where the development would have to stop. Because of a of a known established flood plain. What we understand today is that, yes, Mr. Yang is correct in his observation. There's a lot of water that comes through there. And we have yet to see. You know, the the biggest storm that we may see in our lifetime. It's certainly. You know, anybody's bet as to when that'll happen. But. His elevating of the structure. Is a very good thing. Bringing it closer to the street. Was requested by the developers engineer originally. Just so that there would be more room for houses down in that area. And the combination of. Being of a blanket variance, which we had no way we could consider that because we. You know, as as it is, the variance, the restrictions or the requirements for variance are that it has to be something very unique. And to plat the land in order to create a unique situation was something we couldn't do. So we rejected the request for a blanket variance and and advised that it variances would have to come in individually. So here we are with an individual request for a variance, but my opinion of. This particular situation in this. Phase. Of the development is that we're still looking at lots that can support. A structure. And since they are buildable in that respect. I don't really see that we are meeting the test. Required to grant a variance. And again, I certainly appreciate Mr. Yang bringing in the film and and elevating the structure. Further elevation of the structure was just a vertical wall underneath would be. My preference from here on out rather than bringing in additional fill because. As more and more fill is brought in, our flow area continues to be reduced and. At this time, discharging that flood is important. So. My opinion is that although the request is has some it's some good points to it as far as. You know, what Mr. Yang wishes to do with that particular lot, I don't know that we're meeting the test. As specified in our regulations. And and that's actually state law that I'm referring to. I mean, that's that's higher than in Sherwood.
This is not the first time this has come to us, as you have pointed out. I read the minutes of the May twenty twenty. Board of Zoning Adjustment where the request was for not a variance on nine lots. Right off the bat, that failed to meet the test of uniqueness because nine lots isn't unique. My understanding is I asked the question point blank of the engineer. If they could build a house on the lot as presently platted and the answer was yes, which of course is correct because we wouldn't allow a lot that could not be built on. We do not allow a lot that requires a variance in order to be usable. This is the first of nine that are going to be coming to us and in my mind. It isn't the lot that's causing the problem. It's the location and structure of the house that's causing the problem. And we can't pass a variance based on that. It has to be based on a unique characteristics of lot. Where imposition of the regulation causes an undue hardship and. There are nine lots like this and so that's the uniqueness is not confirmed. And it isn't the lot itself that's causing the problem, nor do I see an undue hardship at this time because there's no flood plain listed. That's my take on it.
Mr. Chairman, why were they the? Why were they allowed to sell these lots in this conditioning?
Because they can be developed.
Yeah.
Well, here we have a homeowner, though, that we requested a special variance to come forth. And he's presented his reasons why and. I guess we're gonna listen to nine of them and say, well, you know, this is real good. Glad that you want to build here, but you can't do it because of this. So I'm gonna give it chances. I'll give the committee a chance to kill this motion, but I'm gonna make. A motion that we grant this variance to this particular twenty four one seven Little Ridge Creek.
Yeah, so this is Frank Yang again. Can I say something? Yeah.
Not sure.
Yeah, and I I definitely appreciate all your feedback and, you know, all all of y'all's opinion on this and stating the laws and everything. Obviously, you know, we love Sherwood. And this, like you said, instead of bringing more fill. You know, creating a higher elevation, possibly slowing down the flow of the creek. This is obviously an. Easier way to go about protecting our investment, right? You know, we're we're not just building a twenty five hundred square foot house. This is gonna be. Almost a thirty seven hundred square foot house, almost a seven hundred thousand dollar investment that my family is building. So whatever we can do to ensure us that. No water or anything is going to get up to this level. I feel like this is the easiest way to do it. It's just simply to. Move the house up towards the curb just a little bit. Like I said, you know, the house is still on the left side, still gonna have a twenty two foot setback. You know, if you want me to push it back to twenty five foot where it lines up with my neighbor to the left. I I'm more than happy to do that. So that that's all I gotta say.
I'll say again, it's the size of the house that's creating the problem, not the lot itself. If it was a smaller house, you would not be having this problem. And we have to make a decision based on whether the lot itself is creating the hardship. And that is a state law and a city ordinance. So our our hands are basically tied on that. And while we appreciate your concern. That's what we're looking at.
And and keep in mind that that he's already gone one step beyond and bought two lots and replatted it into one to try to. Right. mitigate mitigate that and.
Right.
So I mean, he's got more buildable area than the other. Seven that were presented in that blanked blanket variance request in May of twenty twenty.
But the house is still bigger and that's what's causing the problem.
That's right. That is correct.
We have a motion on the floor to approve variance or to allow it. Is there a second? Motion that dies for a lack of a second.
Motion to deny the request of the variance. This Blake.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. An high vote is a denial of the variance. Call the roll.
Hi.
No.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Bruno.
Hi.
Dylan.
Hi.
Sorry, Mr. Yang. I I hope you are able to do something with it, but it is not going to be this.
Okay, well, yeah. Glad to hear that.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Blake.
Second.
Okay, Knight.
Yes.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Bruno.
Hi.
Dylan.
Hi.
Be safe, gentlemen.
Hey, Robert, we gotta have these things into the financial statements at the end, you know?
Into January.
Have them by the end of the month.
End of the month.
Is that right, Blake?
Yes, end of the month. To the city clerk's office.
Oh, so we don't have to take them to Secretary of State. We take them to the city clerk.
The city clerk, city clerk for this one, yes. Now you you probably have to file one with the secretary for a different reason.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, yes, sir. City clerk in this case.
Thanks.
All right.
Hope we can meet in person next month, but we will play it by ear.
Yes, sir.
Stay safe.